Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Larry Clay, and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Zahir Byatt, Peter Reed, Natalie Volport, and Azila West, and our Deputy Secretary Treasurer Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishto-Beg, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment panel, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submission in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out in the bottom of the decision of the Committee. Today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the Committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the Committee. The Committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into Committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee. I'll comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the Committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and Committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. When addressing the Committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the Committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or oppose the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on the speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into Committee for a decision. Madam Secretary, Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there, oh, any declarations of interest?
No.
Any deferral requests this afternoon?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. Two deferral requests. Item number eighteen, seventy-one Kennedy Avenue. There's three file numbers. B zero zero seven seven slash twenty-one T E Y, A nine zero one slash twenty-one T E Y, and A nine oh two slash twenty-one T U Y. And then item twenty-one, eighty-six Gladstone Avenue, A nine sixty-three slash twenty-four T U Y.
Great. And we can do both those right at the top?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right, we will move to seventy-one Kennedy. This is a request to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. The first, Part One, is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, which will be a fourplex with front balconies on the second and third stories, a front basement walkout, a rear ground floor terrace, and a front-covered porch. There'll be a total of four residential dwelling units. The Part Two is to maintain the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling containing two residential dwelling units, also to maintain the existing one-story ancillary detached garage in the rear yard. There is a host of materials associated with this file, and quite a number of reports and folks who have written in. I'm not going to read those into the record today, mainly because the applicant has requested a deferral. So, we have the applicant?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the applicant online, and we also have a number of registered speakers, all showing as opposition, but they'll be speaking only to the deferral request today. So at this time, we'll unmute Christian Chan, who's the agent?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee members. My name is Christian Chan, registered professional planner with the Planning Agency, Inc., and my address is Suite one-three-eight at one-five-seven Adelaide Street, West Toronto, Ontario.
Great, thank you. Now, you have, you're requesting a deferral? If you could give us the rationale behind that, please?
Yes, sir, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on the deferral. The reason for the request for the deferral today, and this, just to note that this application has also previously been deferred to discuss matters with the TRC related to geotechnical slope stability, which has since been resolved. However, in this iteration of the proposal, and in light of the quite resounding amount of opposition letters that have been received since last week, upon review and discussion with my clients, and for the matters that were raised in those letters, we would like to take the time to address these concerns, as well as, more specifically, address the accuracy of the drawings that were put into question regarding the positioning of the Sugar Maple Tree that is directly to the south of the site. It was noted in some of the submissions that the location of the tree was incorrect, both, first of all, wasn't included on the survey. So one of the items that I would like to address in the intervening time before we come back to Committee of Adjustment is to have the survey go onto the adjacent site in order to accurately locate the tree, which would require also the revisions to the arborist report and also the architectural site plan in order to accurately locate this tree. Another item that came up as well was with the TRCA. They have opposition to the proposed lot lines. I do have an issue with how the TRCA is characterized, as not as having productive discussions with them, but we've had many communications with the TRCA, and my client would like to continue that as well, to see if there's any resolution. Also, in one of the other neighboring opposition letters, they requested additional time, so my clients are amenable to heeding that request for them to retain their own land use planner in order to review the application. And I think through that process that myself being a planner and discussing potential areas of resolution, their retained planners would be a good time to do so in the, in the deferral period, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, can we have our first speaker?
Sure. At this time, I'll call up Nicholas Singh to the podium.
Good afternoon, sir. Name and address, please.
Good afternoon, Nicholas Singh, Swansea area rate repairs.
You're aware that, I know you have concerns, but all I really am going to ask you is whether you're in favor or not of the request for a deferral.
Given the applicant's willingness to discuss with the neighbors, I assume that includes the Swansea area rate repairs? Yes.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Do we have another speaker in here or online?
The remaining is online. The owner from twenty-two hundred Bluer Street West, Suite two hundred, Michael.
Michael, are you there?
Michael, you've been unmuted. We'll try one more time. Hello, Michael, you've been unmuted.
Want to come back to Michael?
Yep. We'll go on to Erin Rogers at ten to Forest Road.
That's correct, and yes, I'm fine with the deferral.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll move on through you, Mr. Chair, with Trish Gardner from ten to Forest.
Hello, Ms. Gardner.
Unless Erin spoke on behalf of Trish.
Oh, same address, yes.
Okay, let's go back to Michael then.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Pidiyo, and I, Trish Gardner.
Sorry, sir, I was going to interrupt you. You're breaking up on us here.
All right. Michael, you'd be better now.
Yes, thanks. It's a-
I represent Erin Rogers, Trish Gardner, from ten to Forest Road, and also Mina Dominique from twelve to Forest Road. They happen to be the neighbors that are most directly affected by this application.
Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. I'm just gonna ask you the simple question, whether you've heard the request for a deferral? Are your, your clients, one of your clients is already fine with that. Can you represent the interests of your other clients with respect to the deferral?
Absolutely, as long as there's some control over the next hearing. Are you, if you agree to a deferral, are you going to defer signee die, full of circular new plant, if they become necessary?
Yes, the applicant, we are making no decision today, so when it returns, it will be simply reviewed on its merits at the time.
But with that stipulation-
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty understanding what you're saying.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think what he's trying to ask is, if the application gets deferred today, then it, the application is postponed until the applicant contacts city staff to say that they're in a position to be scheduled, and then they will be scheduled for the next available hearing date.
Okay.
And typically, we don't, you know, defer signee die, we're just deferring until the applicant lets us know.
Right, well, we're fine with new notice. And by the way, is the new notice going to be by mail, because we'll be back on the system?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, notices will be mailed out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's it for speakers, so-
Okay, thank you very much. Let's take this into Committee, panel. Can I get a motion to defer, Zahir?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to approve a motion to defer this item.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. Okay, you have your deferral. We kick over to number, is it twenty-one?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Item number twenty-one, eighty-six Gladstone Avenue.
Okay.
And, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. This will be rescheduled to the February twenty-sixth date.
Okay. I'll read this one into the record. Eighty-six Gladstone. Purposes of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition. There'll be two residential dwelling units, one in the basement and one on the first and second levels within this duplex. Committee had before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, and a staff report from Metrolinks.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, no registered speakers on this item. At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Hi, my name is Jamie Shletzky, five-two-one Atlas Avenue, Toronto, Ontario. We are accepting of the deferral until February twenty-sixth.
So are you requesting a deferral, or is it being requested by someone else?
It is, just, it's on the basis of the public notice was incorrect, so we need to have the appropriate amount of time to reissue the public notice and ensure it's-
Okay, that's pretty automatic. Okay, thank you very much. Pam, can I get a motion to defer? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Motion to defer for proper notice.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Volport, all in favor. Okay, you have your deferral, thank you, ma'am.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, there is one more request for deferral. It's item number twenty-four, one sixty-nine Wheeler Avenue. I believe this is because the sign wasn't posted on time, at which point we could defer to February twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And we'll have the applicant, no registered speakers on this item.
Yep. I'm here.
Hello.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, could we please defer this, because we didn't get the notice on time, and we could not put the notice on the property, so we'd like it to be deferred, please.
Great, thanks. Just for the record, could I get your name and address, please?
Nanavati Shahid.
Address?
One-three-zero-four Woodbine Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, that's great, thanks very much. Okay, guys, it's pretty much automatic. Can I get a motion to defer, Ms. West?
Yes, through you, yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Reed. Okay. All right, that one is deferred.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Before we move on to item number nineteen, I just wanted to speak about the recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act to modernize public notice requirements that enable municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance and consent applications. Many municipalities in the greater Toronto area and bond have chosen to provide alternative forms of notice as an interim measure during the Canada Post Labor Disruption. The city has gone beyond what the regulations require. Some of the things we have done include posting on the City of Toronto website, posting links to the agendas and application information on our web pages, posting on city planning social media channels, posting public hearing signs on the subject site, and publishing the agenda list in the Toronto Star. All of these measures have been taken for today's hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, item nineteen is fifty-two to fifty-four Indian Trail. This is an application to maintain a one-story ancillary building, detached garage in the rear yard, which is currently under construction. The existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling will be maintained and unaltered. That was for fifty-two Indian Trail. Fifty-four Indian Trail is to construct a one-story detached garage in the rear yard. The existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling, including the existing hot tub, will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has before a copy of the minutes of the December four, twenty-twenty-four public hearing and materials submitted, copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property, an application to appeal this decision was filed with T-Lab on December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, presentation materials from the agent. We have email correspondence from engineering and staff reports from, three memos received from urban forestry with respect to this application. We have correspondence and support from Forty Indian Trail and George Staznek, no address provided, letters of interest or concern from B Alhussin, no address provided, and correspondence in opposition from one-six-six-one Bluer Street West.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, and we do have one registered speaker here in person.
Okay.
If you are the owner of the property, your agent is speaking on behalf of you, so you either share the five minutes, or she speaks.
Okay, did we get the agent?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon. Just, if I could ask you to speak up a little louder, please.
Sir, is this better?
That is better, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Your name and address, please.
Sure. So just for context, before we begin, I will be sharing the five-minute time with the owner of the property, who's in the room. So for context, my name is Stephanie Metviva, an associate with Glunch Narn Associates, the registered agent on behalf of the owner. If I could have my presentation, please? Thank you. And next slide, please? Thank you. So again, for context, for the Committee, the sites, meaningfully known as fifty-two and fifty-four Indian Trail, are located on the north side of Indian Trail, east of Indian Road. The sites are located within an established neighborhood, which contains a diversity and range of dwellings. In terms dwelling sizes and architectural styles, this gives rise to an eclectic neighborhood character. Next slide, please. The applications before us today are triggered by a previous consent lot addition application, so for context, a portion of the lands currently belonging to fifty-two Indian Trail would be removed and added to the lands that comply, that comprise fifty-four Indian Trail. Using the image on screen, it's the orange-colored lands that are to be added to fifty-four Indian Trail, indicated as parts one and two on the draft reference plan. This would add approximately two-hundred-and-eight-point-seven square meters of area to fifty-four Indian Trail. As Committee is aware, the consent application was subject to delegated authority and was denied in December of twenty-twenty-four. Next slide, please. The applications before you today are really for technical variances arising from the lot addition request. Put in a different or simpler way, the variances are triggered by the modified lot boundaries. The existing homes and rear decks at both fifty-two and fifty-four Indian Trail are to be retained and altered based on the modify, or the existing site conditions, sorry. There is a number of variances that are triggered. The modified lot boundaries will not adversely impact the proposal or surrounding lands. Generally speaking, the variances are triggered, sorry, next slide, please? Thank you. Generally, the variances are triggered by the modified lot fabric, and again, to recognize existing conditions, there's a total of three variances triggered for fifty-four Indian Trail, and a total of four variances triggered for fifty-two Indian Trail. Grouping them and generalizing, the variances relate to reduced setbacks, as well as reduced rear yard top landscaping, and a roof eve projection. If I could have the next slide, please? This image just indicates using color coding, generally speaking, the areas that are, give rise to the variances. So again, it's to recognize existing conditions for brevity, and I will not go into further detail. The justification and reasons for the variances are further outlined in this submission letter. Again, just to reiterate, and for context, the variances are triggered by existing conditions. It will further recognize the existing conditions. No development is contemplated to either of the existing dwellings. So as outlined in the submission letter, it remains my opinion that the variances triggered are technical in nature and do satisfy the four tests under the Planning Act. I would like to touch very briefly on the letters of opposition that were received by the Committee. So I understand and have reviewed the opposition letters. Generally, the opposition letters identify concerns with drainage, parking, and the ability of the owners of fifty-four Indian Trail to have access to the private lane. In terms of drainage, there's, of course, the legal onus on the owners to adequately manage drainage and grading on-site. The ways that this is to be achieved will be further reviewed and analyzed as part of the future building permit process, does not have bearing on the variances. In terms of parking, a zoning review was completed, and by the city's zoning examiner, a parking deficiency was not raised. Additionally, the city's parking regulations were revised in twenty-twenty-two. So simply, a parking variance is not triggered in this instance. Lastly, in terms of the ability for the owners of fifty-four Indian Trail to have access to the private lane, this was identified in four separate letters of opposition. The assertions and the phrasing of it, we do take offense to. It's slightly abusive in tone. The assertions are also incorrect. Owners are allowed to have access to the private lane. This is further identified in the legal opinion letter, and I will leave the last thirty seconds to the owner of the property. I'm happy to answer any questions that there may be. Thank you.
Yeah, so are you and your clients aware of Forestry's recommendation to review variance number four?
We are.
Okay.
And so if I can be allowed just a minute to elaborate on that, we did receive and review the forestry memos, so as forestry staff are aware, there is an active tree injury permit process that is under review and to be, is to be received. So some of the assertions in the, in the forestry memorandums that there isn't sufficient detail, or that a permit needs to be provided, I mean, we agree, the permit is under review. There's also the assertion that trees will be injured. We have an arborist report, it is with forestry staff, so we also find it a little bit interesting. In one memo, it says that there are no, no approval conditions to be applied in two separate memos that is then rescinded, and the phrasing of it could be a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put two minutes on the clock, ma'am. Did you want to come up? If I could have your name and address, please?
My name is-
Is the button on, the red button?
My name is Andrea Bakter, and I'm the homeowner of fifty-four Indian Trail. I've lived there for sixteen years and do so with my daughter and husband. I believe my husband's online, he couldn't appear in person today. We brought forward these applications to enable us to build a garage so we can get an electric car. We currently have street parking and a twenty-eleven Acura that we would like to upgrade. Our neighbors at fifty-two Indian Trail agreed to adjust the lot line and support these applications. Unlike what Mr. Dear has written, I'm not a thief, a fraudster, or a liar, well, worse yet, a developer. This is a pretty simple project for which we are seeking approval. Two of my neighbors, actual people who live on my street, wrote in support of my applications, our applications. The December fourth hearing of the variances, one of our neighbors spoke in support of our applications. That makes five real households who live on our street in my immediate neighborhood who support. We've also been supported by the highly competent professionals who have put in accurate and honest application materials filed with city staff. There was the urban forestry objection, but other than that, no other objections. The conditions urban, or forestry seemed to want to impose was to require us to pay five hundred dollars. I'm happy to pay five hundred dollars. We've already met the other condition, it was to file an arborist's report. And then, in our application, there is Mr. Dear. He wrote not one, not two, but four letters to this Committee, each of which is abusive and defamatory in tone, and each of which contains outright lies, and appears to have been written for the purpose of maintaining his three parking spots, which are not even his to begin with, they park in a right-of-way. The other objection letters you received come from people without addresses, in some cases, without full names, and in some cases, from encrypted email addresses. Query who those people are, if they even exist. In that context, I have three questions for the Committee. The first is, what weight do you give those objection letters? Are angry, abusive letters from one person willing to give his address, and who's clearly self-interested with a motive to maintain his three old gotten parking spots, and letters from who knows who? Given more weight than the real submissions of my real neighbors? Are they given more weight than the application materials produced by professionals with professional standards and oaths to be accurate? Are they given more weight than city staff, who didn't identify any issues other than the, to file an arborist report and pay five hundred dollars? We have appealed the December tenth decision, and so I don't think our application is moot. I don't think it, this should just be denied. If the Committee disregards the abusive letters from Mr. Dear, and the addressless letters from who knows who, all you have left are our applications for simple minor variances for what is a pretty simple project, city staff reports that identify no issues save for, except the tree, letters of support, and letters of support from my real neighbors.
Ma'am, I'm just gonna draw this to a conclusion. I think we understand your perspective on this file. Thank you. Any ques, sorry, any questions, panel of Speaker? Thank you. All right. Did we have-
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have one registered speaker here.
Yes.
Yep, you come right up to the podium there.
Good afternoon, sir.
If I could have your name and address, please?
My name is Jharadial Deear. My address is sixteen sixty-one Bluer Street West. I lived in my house for the last forty years.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
First thing I'd like to object, I, from the people who submitted the application, they wrote, they told us here right now that garage is under construction, and this is a lie, damn lie and fraud. The reason is, there's no building- The reason is, there's no building permit, garage is not under construction, this is cheating, deceiving to the committee of adjustment, everything. Number two, I lived in this house for the last 40 years. Before this, it was a contractor, he built the house, he lived 40 years, he built the garage and it had a setback about 15 feet from the 15 feet driveway. So we are here for the last 80 years parking our car in our garage, in our parking. So this guy, they just extending, extending. Now, what they had done, they showed on the plan, the existing garage, they doubled the size, they originally at site, no construction, wrong. And the existing garage they shown, wrong. Now, other thing here, they new design, they extended out forward inside our laneway five feet. So they're extending out garage. So what happened now, their backside, there's big trees, 400 trees, my parking, my property, thus we leave them only because the dead end corridor, only about four meter, three meter, three point five meter driveway, the backside. They have no driveway, need minimum six meter, they have only three, four meters. That's wrong, again, wrong. So now, because I have submitted my survey plan, you can see my survey plan, it shows my property is goes to the laneway, then after that, from the laneway, 15 meter. So there's the next door, the existing building, the 100 year old apartment building. So my property, I park next to my that, I mean, my property, so they have no driveway, only three meters, three point five meter dead end corridor, that's wrong. Can't drive it, so the big trees there, this is showing, again, what they have done, make very big extension, that's wrong, they can't do this kind of extension. When they when they leased this property from the 52 Indian Trail, that's my son actually, and they wrote on the deeds, on the lead, that they will never use the laneway. That was item number seven, they give the return, they will never use the laneway, they just use for the storage purpose. Now, everything, they collected, now, everything lie, everything deceiving to the committee for adjustment, even here, you can see existing was small building, but they are showing, oh, everything so big, again, lie, and no building permit, this is what they're insisting is, they have building permit, they are under construction, damn lie. And this kind of everything cheating, they are both a liar, they came from Middle East and we have extension, extension, extension. And I don't like to tell you more what they have done to me for the last couple of days now, this is not appropriate, but they are trying to typical same kind of time of policy. What they are now doing, just take over my property, take over my neighbor's apartment building, they want to demolish it, go on the top, everybody shocked.
Mr. Chair, I think he needs to stick to the merits of the application, please, and how it impacts him.
Sorry?
Okay, continue, sir. I think what Sabrina is saying is you're veering off topic.
Okay.
You could just stick to what they're proposing and how it actually impacts you.
My effect is here, because when they're proposing, there's no driveway, backside, we need six meter, because they extended his garage out in the laneway. So when they know where they can park their car in the garageway, my property is there, my car parking there, for them, they had to come over my property to park the car.
So you're contending that they're trespassing on your property?
Sorry?
They're trespassing on your property?
Yes, they can't drive it, and I would never allow anybody to step on a property. Now, 40 years I lived there, before that, 40 years my contact other lived there, and they have no right.
Okay, I think we understand your issue. Thank you very much.
Other other things, they're liar, they're 24 hours, they just walk around, walk around, walk around, and getting the concerned, concerned, concerned people, because this is very, for the last 40 years, people are helpful, very nice people, everybody.
Okay. Sir, I think you've made your point. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions of the speaker?
Just one quick one. What was the address that you where you live, your address?
My address is 1661 Blue Street West, opposite to this proposed garage.
Is that, from looking at the Google map, is that?
You can see my property, my survey plan, sir, so my survey plan.
Is it Whelan's Gate?
Yes. My survey plan.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can go back to the agent.
And we'll ask you to have take a seat back in the audience, please.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can have the agent back?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi.
You've you've got five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I would like to rebut on two aspects that were raised there. The assertion that there is no building permit applicable for the new garage on 52 Indian Trail, there is in fact a building permit application that was approved. In the plans that were provided to the committee, the building permit number is in fact referenced. So I respectfully disagree with the assertion that there is no building permit applicable. I do agree that the garage itself has not been constructed as of yet. There is various factors that contribute to that. In terms of the driveway width not being met, that's not a requirement of the application, it has not been raised as a variance matter to be considered. In fact, the proposed driveways, sorry, proposed detached accessory garages are subject to various zoning regulations in accordance with the citywide zoning bylaw. The minimum driveway width has not been raised, it is not applicable in this circumstance. There's minimum setbacks from the property lines that must be adhered to, given this is a private laneway. Those minimum setbacks are satisfied. Thank you.
Just for our clarity, you submitted as part of your application, a letter from a lawyer clarifying the status of the laneway?
We did. It's referred to as the legal opinion letter, and it clearly identifies that when lands change hands, there is the there is the allowance or the legal provision given that owners are able to be added to the private laneway agreement. So for context and committee's benefit, there is a private laneway agreement. In essence, it's a private laneway that extends along the northern property line of 52 and 54 Indian Trail, as well as many other properties going in an easterly direction. So it is subject to a private laneway agreement. It's land that's contributed by various landowners. This is identified on the draft reference plan as well as Parts One and Two. There is a legal instrument that allows for that private laneway to be created.
And who administers that and how is it maintained?
The administration, I would need to check my notes. The agreement is quite dated, it's many, many decades old. In terms of maintenance of the areas, it's an accumulative effort. So again, it's land that's donated by the surrounding landowners. The city would have no jurisdiction, it does not maintain it.
Okay. Sabrina, did you want to say something?
Through you, Mr. Chair, is there a maintenance agreement amongst all property owners of this private laneway?
Who shovels the snow?
Well, who would repair?
And who repairs it, yeah?
So it is a gravel laneway. Again, I can check my notes as part of the actual agreement itself. It's a bit of a nuance, I mean, it's not a typical arrangement, I'll give you that. We'd have to check the notes to see how all of those legal aspects are dealt with.
I think for the point of clarity, I wouldn't mind hearing the answer. If you wanted to come back up, ma'am?
There are provisions in the laneway agreement to provide that everybody maintains their portion of the donated land. So when, if you see on the plan there, the 15, the back 15 feet that were donated by 52 Indian Trail, 52 Indian Trail has an obligation to maintain those back, those back feet, and it's just cooperative by the neighbors on our lovely street that that.
If someone has a snow blower and they just blow the snow out?
Yeah, everyone maintains their own little square.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. Panel, I'm sorry, did you have any questions of the agent before we? Anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you all, we're going to committee. No, sir, please sit down. Okay, who wants to start us off? Peter?
Sure, Chair. I mean, I think it's, I think the fact that the consent was refused and has been appealed, to me, it's putting the cart before the horse to actually try to opine on the minor variances. I understand the applicant's desire that we do that, but I think that this is this is better dealt with as one package. And given that it's actually already been appealed, I think that to T-Lab, I think it's more appropriate that it's all dealt with there. But I do think that it's important in in our notes, kind of that we're, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not judging the merits of this as it is, and I think that that's important for T-Lab to know that we're not, that I wouldn't be voting against this because I don't think it's necessarily desirable, because I think this makes sense in theory. I do have some concerns about the tree. So I think having that resolved prior to this going to T-Lab would be a very positive thing. But that's that's my position. I think this is this is best if we if we refuse it and let it be dealt with together.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Peter. I think, you know, having having everything bundled together and looked at in one complete package seems to make more sense rather than us opining on it and in advance of the decision on the consent. So I think that makes more sense, frankly. So I would agree with you. Anyone else? Nellie?
Just a comment that those variances that urban forestry is asking to refuse, they are regarding the, you know, the new new garages, right? You know, the other variants of one, two, three, they, you know, they refer to the existing conditions, we, you know, probably we don't deal with, right? We were more concerned with the garages and both have, you know, raised concerns of urban forestry and need to be dealt with as well, with urban forestry.
It would be in the applicant's best interest to resolve those before it goes to T-Lab, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I'll move a motion to refuse the applications, but I would like it noted in, just for the record, that this is for the reason that the consent and the minor variances be considered as one, which I think is appropriate, and it's not being refused based on the merits of the applications.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Reed to refuse, seconded by Mr. Bayet, all in favor. Okay, the application is refused. Good luck at T-Lab. All right. Move on to item number 20. 700 Willard Avenue, this is an application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second story addition with the front and rear balconies, front covered porch, rear ground level deck and porch. There will be a total of three residential units on this lot. Committee has afforded a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and an arborist report.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for
Good afternoon. Mr. Bongers?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Rick Bongers, address is 75 Redwood Avenue, Cambridge, Ontario.
Okay, sir, a short presentation, please.
Homeowners are doing a proposed second floor addition for a secondary suite, and there will be additional suite in the basement. Contemporary design, but in keeping with the neighborhood for as far as top ups go, I feel the variances are minor in nature, and the application is a suitable development of the property and is appropriate for the neighborhood.
Panel, any questions? Does anyone want to ask about rear landscaping? Thank you, Peter.
I actually did have that as a note. Yeah, to the applicant, you do have a sizable deficiency in rear yard landscaping here, about 12% short of the 50. Is there anything you can do to improve that situation, or have you considered alternatives or different pavers or expanding planted areas?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't expect that to become an issue with existing condition, but I'm sure the homeowners would be willing to reduce those pavers to a percentage that's more suitable. It's just, it represents an existing condition, so I didn't really consider it was going to be a concern.
So just to follow off on Peter's question, so you're suggesting that your client will remove some of those pavers and replace it with sod?
If they need to, I'm certainly they would, they would be agreeable to do that as far as appeasing the committee members, and obviously the outcome decision of this application.
It would help, I think, your application, but you need to help us a little bit, because right now, you're, the variance number five says that you're supposed to have, you're required to have 29.76 square meters of soft landscaping, you currently have 23 meters. Are you suggesting that you could replace enough of the current, of the existing interlocking brick with sod to remove that variance?
Yeah, or even a permeable paver.
Well, I think the preference of the panel would be if you can remove pavers and put sod in there, that would be preferable.
Okay. Now, what sort of number?
So then, if that's the case, then are you are you eliminating variance five?
Well, is there a number we can come up to that's a little more agreeable? I mean, maybe 38.6 is a little ambitious, but what if we brought it up to, let's say, 45 points?
Well, what would 45 be in terms of square meters? We need the square meter number, too. Do you want to, do you have that, or do you do you need some time to figure that out?
No, let's say we brought it up to 26 square meters.
And that, what's the what's the percentage?
Bear with me one sec.
Peter, are you okay with 45?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Let me just do the calculation, you can bear with me a sec. That brings us up, that would bring us up to 40, 47%.
Okay, so 26 square meters and 47%.
Yes.
Okay, that's good, thank you for that. All right, Nellie?
Question regarding variance one, I understand that the front yard setback is obviously, you know, it's shorter than required, and if you could just, you know, briefly explain why is that, was it in an existing condition, or is it a kind of an extension of the house?
No, that represents the existing condition of the front porch.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We'll take this into committee. Peter, since you started it?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and thanks to the...
Oh, wait, no, sorry. Sorry, let me, let me correct that. That 1.7 meter, 1.78 meter front yard setback is a result of a second-floor sort of boxed-out cantilever that's just done sort of break up the massing of the dwelling. The 1.78, let me repeat, is from the proposed second-floor front cantilever, as it means it just, like I mentioned, breaking up the massing of the front stuff.
Okay. And the first floor, is it in line with the neighbors, more or less?
Yes, it's aligned with the existing house, which sits back, it looks on the plan to be maybe four or five inches from the neighboring dwelling. So the entire, the entire second floor, aside from that cantilever, will be in line with the existing main wall of front of the house.
Okay. Okay? Peter?
Okay, so we're back in committee?
Yep.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I, I do believe that these variances are minor. I, I appreciate that the applicant has improved the rear yard soft landscaping, I think that's important. And to Nellie's point about the, that kind of boxed-out bay window in the front, I think that works on the street, because there is a variety of setbacks from the, from the road, and this is, this is also abutting a flanking lot, which I think creates a different, a different situation on its north with a bit more flexibility. So I, I think these variances are minor and fully supportable. So I will move approval of the application as amended, that's with variance number five being amended as the, as the motion.
Okay, motion to approve the amended application by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Byatt, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you, sir. Item 21 was deferred, we moved item number 22. 355 Oakwood Ave. This is an application to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor by reconstructing the existing rear second-story roof deck with a new exterior staircase and a new partial third-story addition with a rear balcony as well as exterior staircase. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, one within, one dwelling within the second story and the other one dwelling within the third story. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revise site plan, floor plans and elevations, receive January the 8th, six photographs of the subject property and a covering letter from the agent. There is a staff report from Urban Forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers. At this time, we'll unmute Lou.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Lou Parente, 47 Lowes Water Avenue in Markham. And, yeah, I think it's just a, a basic minor variance we're requesting for these two, two residents, or two units, rather, sorry.
Okay. Panel, do you have any questions? Zahir?
Just a quick question, I'm just looking at, I, I believe the, the addition is on top of an existing single-story, first-story structure, existing structure.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. I'm looking at one of the photographs that has, you know, the grapevines on the side. There's a portion of that structure that's got a little door, now that, that's not the part, well presumably, that's not part of the, the first floor existing ground structure, is it, or is that going to be part of it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the vine you're talking about. Are you talking about the balcony at 357? Because it is the same owner.
I'm, I'm looking at one of the photographs that's, that's part of the package that we have before us.
I think that's a different file.
It's a different file. Okay. That's Gladstone, is it? Or am I looking in the wrong application?
That may be Gladstone.
Okay, that's Gladstone, so I might be looking at the wrong one?
No worries.
Yep.
Can you speak to the Gladstone item?
Oh, my goodness. I, I do apologize.
No worries.
Must have been the heavy lunch.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, just, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that you had seen community planning's report and that you were okay with the conditions they're proposing?
Yeah, absolutely. I wore, I worked very closely with Chantel. She requested the covering of the stairs. Her concern was safety, icing, that sort of thing. We're prepared to, to install anti-slip treads on each, each one of the stairs and a covering, wood and metal covering to sort of eliminate any snow buildup on the stairs.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, let's take this into committee. Zahir? Make up for it?
I've got to make up for it. I, I think this is a very straightforward application with two variances that are relatively minor, so I have no hesitation, and I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions from what I can see. Is it forestry? Oops, sorry, am I looking at the wrong one? All right, it's planning condition and forestry number two.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you.
A great day to all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 23. 409 West Moreland Avenue, this is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by enclosing the existing front porch for habitable space and to construct a new covered front porch and front yard waste enclosure. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, 10 photographs of the subject property and presentation materials from the agent. There are six form letters in support from 371, 408, 411, 414, 422, West Moreland and 420, West Moreland.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Jennifer Buckland.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Buckland, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of 409 West, West Moreland Avenue, North.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Just hang on a sec. Panel, this is straightforward porch enclosure. Does anyone really need a presentation? No. Jennifer, we, we've read the application, we're familiar with the material, it's a fairly straightforward request. Panel doesn't need a presentation today. Is there anything you'd like to share with us before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Okay. Any questions of Jennifer? No. Oh, you do?
No.
Oh. We're in committee. Oh, you have a question?
My question is regarding the variance three. We have less than required front yard landscape, and I understand they're existing conditions, but do you think there is something you can improve in this regard?
We could. It, it's a tiny property and it has a tiny front yard, and most of the front yard is actually within the, within the property line. What I will say is that the owner is very, very committed to gardening, and if you look at the site plan that's up there, you'll see that she just, we've just proposed the waste enclosure to the side and the paving is just there so for ease of bringing, dragging the, the bins to the sidewalk for garbage pickup. But she is, she is very committed to, as much as she can, put soft landscaping between the, the west property line and the sidewalk. So we would hope that, you know, overall, it's a great ratio of soft and hard up to the sidewalk. We would hope that that might make you happy, but if we have to reconfigure, we can't, we could move the waste enclosure along the pave, the paved walkway and revisit that.
You really want to make them do that?
No.
Yeah. And the Municipal Boulevard is pretty much all green, right? So, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Let's take this into committee. Mizila?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward the motion to approve this application. As you mentioned, it's a very straightforward application with no condition.
Okay. Motion by Ms. West to approve, seconded by Mr. Byatt, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you. Did we?
Defer item 24.
Defer 24?
Yep.
Item number 25, 156A Hallam Street. This is an application to alter the existing lawful non-conforming two-story semi-detached dwelling in the rear one-story ancillary building by constructing a second-story addition above the existing ancillary building for office space. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the subject property and two form letters in support from 152B and 156B Hallam Street.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Eddie Perez.
Hello, good afternoon, committee members and Chairman. I'm Eddie Perez at 537 Roger Road. As you noted, there were proposed in office space above an existing garage. We spoke to both neighbors, they're on board, they're okay with us using the party wall. The case is because owners, they work out of the house, and three of them actually work from home, and it's getting very hectic in the house, so that's for the purpose for their proposing the office space above the garage, and I feel that it's very common for the area, because it's a commercial area. If you have any questions, I'll feel free to answer them, thank you.
Okay, any questions, panel? No, Zahir? Peter?
Thanks, thanks, Zahir. Thanks, Chair. I, can you, I mean, just partly for my benefit, but variance number three, I, I don't really understand. Can you explain that to me, what that means? And if that's right? I'm assuming it's right, because it, it comes from zoning.
Yeah, I think they look at it from the front of the house. We're actually building the offices in the back, so that's where they're taking that number from.
Oh, so they're saying the office space should be three meters from the front, but it's actually 28, because it's in the back?
Yeah, I took the back.
Okay.
Because, yeah.
Office space is normally at the front, I guess.
Right, okay. That makes sense, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Perez, we were musing about this one beforehand, about the height, but we understand because of the classification that you're in, 5.9 meters for an ancillary is permitted.
Correct.
Okay.
Chair, if I might just?
Yes.
Just a question, and I'm not sure if this is an appropriate request, condition that the office space not be used for habitation? I'm not sure.
Eddie, is this, is this, this is just office? No one's going to be living there?
No, no, just office. As you can see, there's just a powder room up there, there's no full bath.
Okay. All right. Nellie?
A quick question, so the, all the variances with regards to setbacks, I understand that the first floor is existing, right? You're not expanding on the...
No, the first floor is existing correctly.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Let's take this into committee. Zahir?
This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, at this time, we break, because the next set of applications are heard at 3:30 or shortly thereafter.
Oh. Okay.
Thank you.
We reconvene at 3:30.
Members, please turn off your videos, microphones, and we'll mute the room.
No one's going to be living there?
No, no, just office. As you can see, there's just a powder room up there, there's no full bath.
Okay. All right. Nellie?
A quick question, so the, all the variances with regards to setbacks, I understand that the first floor is existing, right? You're not expanding on the...
No, the first floor is existing correctly.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Let's take this into committee. Zahir?
Sure, Chair, this is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we break because the next set of applications are heard at 3:30 or shortly thereafter.
Oh, okay. We reconvene at 3:30.
Members, please turn off your videos, microphones, and we'll mute the room.
Okay. Any questions, panel?
Sure, Chair, this is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we break because the next set of applications are heard at 3:30 or shortly thereafter.
Okay. We reconvene at 3:30.
Members, please turn off your videos, microphones, and we'll mute the room.
Okay. Any questions, panel?
Sure, Chair, this is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel? No, Zahir?
Thanks, thanks, Zahir. Thanks, Chair. I, can you, I mean, just partly for my benefit, but variance number three, I don't really understand. Can you explain that to me, what that means? And if that's right? I'm assuming it's right because it, it comes from zoning.
Yeah, I think they look at it from the front of the house. We're actually building the offices in the back. So that's where they're taking that number from.
Oh, so they're saying the office space should be three meters from the front, but it's actually 28 because it's in the back?
Yeah, I took the back.
Okay, okay.
Because, yeah.
Office space is normally at the front, I guess.
Right, okay. That makes sense, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Perez, we were musing about this one beforehand about the height, but we understand because of the classification that you're in, 5.9 meters for an ancillary is permitted.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we break because the next set of applications are heard at 3:30 or shortly thereafter.
Okay. We reconvene at 3:30.
Members, please turn off your videos, microphones, and we'll mute the room.
Okay. Any questions, panel?
Sure, Chair, this is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, any questions, panel?
Sure. This is a very straightforward application and really quite minor. I'd like to move a motion to approve without any conditions.
Okay, we continue with item 26, 189 Beatrice Street. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front basement walkout with a terrace, a third-story addition with front terrace, a rear three-story addition with a second-story terrace. The existing ancillary building will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has before it a copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plan, elevations, two photographs of trees on the subject property, and a report from urban forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Enzo Locensano.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name's Enzo Locensano from HDWG.
Hi. Maybe a short presentation on this one, please?
Sure. Sure. With regards to the variances, we studied 25 applications on Beatrice where we found 44% or 11 projects where the floor space index ranged above the 1.0 mark. The majority ranged from .84 up to some anomalies at 1.92, but most of them were at 1.11, 1.29, 1.13. So we were pretty... So we were pretty confident that the 1.15 is well within the area that we're doing this proposed addition. With regards to the rear yard, the soft landscaping is really caused more by the existing garage and the amount of setback from the laneway, which takes up a lot of space, which is very common in this area because of the oversized garages. Within those 25 projects that we did look at on Beatrice, the range is anywhere between 21% and 37% of rear yard landscaping. So again, we're well within the 32% that we're allowing for. With regards to the depth of the building, again, we're only looking for a one meter extension past the permitted bylaw. And again, we feel that this project meets the four tests.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions? Nellie?
What is the, I cannot see from the plans, the rear yard coverage is, what is that, material wise?
That will be mostly grass at the back. It's a slotted area there just below the existing catch basin. The client, like we, what we looked at was there's a planter and an existing stair already there up against the garage, as you can see on the left hand side. What the client has done on, actually, he owns 189 Beatrice, he used a lot of what's called turf block for any of the walkways, which allows grass to grow between the blocks, but also acts as a safe walkway.
It's on the south side?
No, the plant where he lives now?
Yeah.
Yeah, he owns 189, which is just south of here. He just purchased this property as well at 183.
Okay, to here.
Just a quick one. You have a balcony on the second floor level at the rear.
Yes.
I imagine there's some overlook issues on both the neighbors to the south, I believe, and the north. Would you consider privacy screening of 1.5 meters on both, on the two sides, north and south sides?
Yeah, yeah, we typically do that as a standard. The 1.5, we actually thought of 1.8, 1.8 meter screen on the sides. But sometimes we actually get a negative reaction from the neighbor because it cuts off their sort of view through there rather than seeing more of a solid wall. They want to see more of a transparent. So, but we could definitely consider that as a pedestrian screen on both the north and south sides.
I think that, you know, in considering long-term usage and neighbors changing, that might be a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I always, always stress that these terraces are really a convenience thing. It's not a terrace where you're going to hold a party. And I think that's what most neighbors are usually worried about, but these terraces are quite small and that's not what the intent is.
It's off a bedroom, right?
It is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's take it into committee. Anyone want to take this one on?
Sure, Joe, I'll take this. I think this is a fairly straightforward application. And I was concerned also about variance number two, about the rear yard soft landscaping, but I think it's existing circumstances. I appreciate the agent's agreement to provide privacy screening on the rear balcony on the north and south sides. So with that having been said, I'd like to move in a motion to approve forestry condition number one.
Okay, motion by Mr. Byatt to approve. Do I have a seconder?
Sure.
Mr. Reed, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you. Item number 27, 149 Gainsborough Road. This is an application to convert the existing three-story detached fourplex into an apartment building with a total of 13 residential dwelling units by constructing a rear four-story addition. Along the south side of this building, there will be an at-grade patios, a first-level exterior corridor, balconies on the first to fourth levels, patios on the fourth little level. There will also be first-level exterior staircase on the east side of the building as well as 14 bicycle parking spaces on the portion of the south side lot line and one accessible parking space in the rear yard. Committee has before a copy plan, a survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, 15 photographs of trees on the subject property, arborist report and tree protection plan, planning rationale, and we have correspondence from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person as well as two registered speakers.
Okay, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Jeffrey Moot, Principal Moot Architect, 139 Carla Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, sir, you have five minutes. We'll need a presentation.
Okay. 149 Gainsborough Road is located just north and sort of east of the intersection between Gerard Street East and Coxwell Avenue. This intersection is well-served by public transportation and is located within walking distance of many critical amenities such as grocery stores, community centers, natural trails, medical offices. The goal of this proposal is to construct much-needed and appropriate purpose-built rental units in an area of the city which is in desperate need. Specifically, this proposal is a request to expand upon the existing three-story detached dwelling, which is a fourplex, by constructing a new rear four-story addition. The proposed rear addition will contain eight additional purpose-built rental apartment units. Dedicated suite entrances will be located along the north and the south sides of the building with on-grade and elevated patios throughout. The four-story addition will be tucked in behind the existing building. Its impact on the surrounding sort of urban context will be subtle and minimal for many reasons, but to name just a couple. Firstly, the addition will be surrounded by an established forested condition on three sides, which will reduce the impact on the neighboring buildings. It will be as close to a zero-impact condition as realistically possible within an urban context. Slide number five, if you happen to have it there, shows sort of a key plan. If you can get a sense of what that looks like with the bold green on the left-hand side of the key plan there. Secondly, the proposed addition is set back approximately 21 meters from the front public sidewalk. Therefore, the new roofline will not impact the existing streetscape along Gainsborough. If you could just flip up, please, to slide four. Shows a sightline from the sidewalk. You get a sense there of the existing shaded building in the front with the bold blue line demonstrating the sightline. We have discussed this proposal with community planning. The belief is that this project does indeed share the values and the priorities outlined in the official plan and the latest zoning bylaw, and that the variances are considered minor. The proposal represents ideas which are specifically targeted at creating a diverse range and mix of housing options within the city, including units to accommodate people at all stages of life and the needs of all household sizes. It represents a progression towards a more inclusive and sustainable approach to housing in Toronto. Thank you very much. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. I think we'll hold questions until we hear from the other speakers.
Through you, Mr. Chair. For those that are here in person that wish to speak to this item, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the committee of adjustment and everyone. My name is Hui Kim. I own 151 Gainsborough Road located on the north side of the subject project, I mean property. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not objecting to this project since Toronto needs more housing. However, I have some concerns as our property is rented and some tenants work from home. Number one, access and parking. We share a driveway with the subject project, the property, and our tenant parks at the back of the, my, back of the property. Construction might block their access and extending the building could make it hard to park. I need to know that access will stay open during and after construction. Number two, timeline and communication. I need to know when the project will start and how long it will take. That will help our tenants plan since construction will affect their ability to work from home. And who should I contact if there are any issue? Number three, noise, dust, and privacy. Construction will cause noise and dust. One tenant who makes many phone calls for work is concerned about the noise. What will be done to reduce noise and dust? Can we get a timeline for noise work so our tenant can plan accordingly? Also, how will our privacy be protected with the new buildings? Number four, driveway condition. The driveway already needs some repairs and construction traffic might make it worse. How will it be maintained and repaired? Number five, accountability and compensation. I request a written document addressing these concerns and outlining how any issue will be resolved. Additionally, I would like to know the compensation process for any damages or disruptions caused by non-compliance. Who will be responsible to indemnification and how can I pursue it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll answer a couple of questions, but most of them will be, will ask the agent to respond to.
Yeah.
But if you asked about who do you call if there's a problem, 311. Okay, just call 311, explain your issue, they will direct you to the appropriate department.
Thank you for that.
And in terms of compensation, the likely path for that, if it's not resolved between you and the neighbor, would be small court.
Small court.
Small court, small claims court.
Yes, yeah, small claim.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the owner at 187 Gainsborough Road, Nathan.
Yes. Calling in from 187 Gainsborough Road. I've been a resident here for about 19 years and my concerns are mainly in reference to the effect of the development that the development would have on parking in the neighborhood. As a local, I can tell you that we get by with the amount of on-street parking we have, but only just. If, if a neighbor has a dinner party or an overnight guest, we all feel it. Heavy snowfall wreaks havoc in the area. Residents make do by crowding intersections and driveways. This often blocks sightlines and creates dangerous situations. As they mentioned, we are a short walk from shops, restaurants, and fitness facilities, very few of whom provide parking, and that parking is limited, so the patrons have to park somewhere, and that somewhere is nearby residential streets, which creates a hotspot of steep competition for on-street parking, which is frustrating to those of us residents who have parking permits. We often have to park on neighboring streets because there are no parking spaces close to home, which only extends our frustration deeper into the community. 149 Gainsborough currently has four apartments and acclaimed four parking spaces. Proximity to transit doesn't mean that those tenants will waive their right to own cars, and we've noticed that the four available spaces are occupied. At a minimum, we expect the city to assume that the ratio of cars to apartments will remain the same as it is now, and for that reason, the proposal needs to be adjusted. The proposal aims to expand a fourplex to 13 apartments and reduce existing onsite parking to a single parking space. If we apply the current ratio of apartments to cars, four units, four cars, without increasing onsite parking, this expansion would add 12 additional vehicles in competition for on-street parking. Tripling the residency and transferring the parking burden to the community should, in my opinion, disqualify this proposal as a minor variance. I believe there is a solution, and I'll get to that in a minute. In reference to the applicant-supporting materials, page six cites 11 Newbold as a precedent for appealing the maximum floor space index. That building is an excellent example of how you can elevate the structure at the rear to provide ground-level sheltered parking for the residents onsite. Page 10 cites a large parking lot across the street from the subject site. This is a commercial parking lot that serves the paying customers of the businesses that maintain it, primarily No Frills. This is not long-term public parking, and there are posted signs indicating that overnight parking is prohibited. I see an opportunity here to benefit both the city and this developer if the two can work together. To the developer, expand on the precedent set by 11 Newbold. Elevate the rear extension and provide ground-level sheltered parking. See page four. I realize that likely reduces the number of apartment units you can build, but with the removal of sheds outlined in your plan and a creative layout, there should be ample space to increase the number of onsite parking spaces. To the city, there's a paved roadway that runs perpendicular to Gainsborough along the north edge of the No Frills parking lot directly across the street from 149 Gainsborough. Put the community at ease by widening and resurfacing that roadway and install as many Chevron parking spaces as you can to increase permitted parking capacity in the area by more than enough to offset any overflow from 149 Gainsborough. One additional caveat I'd like to add, the community won't benefit from an expensive empty parking lot. To maximize the benefit, I suggest that any permit approvals are conditional on the developer's commitment to provide onsite parking included in their rental agreements and not at an additional charge. These suggestions would require compromises, but they are practical. There's a lot of good that can come from this if the city and the developer can coordinate their efforts and keep the existing community in mind. Please do that. Thank you very much for hearing my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, panel? No. Is that any more speaker? That's the last speaker?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's all that we have on our list unless there's anyone else here in person that wishes to speak on this item. See none?
Okay, right, we have the agent back. Hello, sir. So you heard some concerns and some suggestions, so...
I did indeed, thank you. I absolutely agree with some form of public-private parking agreement outside the purview for this specific hearing. Unfortunately, we, to address the parking concerns, we, we do aim to create a rental building which attracts and continues to attract and support TTC riders and bicycle riders alike. This particular site is perfectly suited to this housing typology, in my opinion. We are offering 14 bicycle, secure bicycle parking spaces at the rear lot. I stress they are secure, they can be covered. We do not have full-time tenant parking spaces identified on the zoning variance. This is not a requirement. We are not here to discuss a minor variance tied directly to full-time tenant parking. We are offering one short-term accessible parking spot, and we are asking for a variance for a second, the removal of a second short-term parking spot. Secondly, I think the first speaker, owner of property 151 Gainsborough, we did connect in the hallway prior to the hearing. It seems like the discussion points are more concerned around construction-related issues, which we will absolutely address following the outcome of the hearing. We exchanged contact information and will speak more offline. We understand the importance of communication and courtesy with neighboring properties during construction. It still is construction at the end of the day, however, we will absolutely communicate with them and coordinate with them if there are... We will absolutely communicate with them and coordinate with them if there are to be any interruptions. You can see the right-of-way running along the north side of the site plan that's up on the screen there. So there's 3.1 meters that belong to property 149, and there's another approximately 1.4 meters which belong to 151 Gainesboro. And so there is plenty of space there, and there is nothing proposed to be constructed, and that is a legal right-of-way. So there will be no permanent structures. There may be some short-term interruptions or closures, but we will absolutely communicate that and give plenty of notice. Thank you.
Great, sir. Did you have, you or your client have any discussions with the surrounding neighbors prior to this application?
We did issue some letters to tenants in the immediate area and onsite. And primarily, the discussions so far have been with community planning and some high-level conversations with forestry.
My only observation, I mean, there's, you know, people have some concerns, but, you know, a proposal this size might have benefit from, you know, a door-knocking campaign, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Just for the future.
I agree. Thank you.
Panel, any questions? Peter?
Thanks. Just one regarding existing tenants and parking arrangements with them. Are any of the existing apartments, do they have parking tied to them? And are the tenants aware and supportive of what's going on?
We have issued letters to the tenants describing, not knowing the outcome of today, of course, but describing the concept and the proposal to construct at the rear and that there will be, there would be a loss of, as identified in the zoning notice, there would be a loss of existing parking. And so those discussions will need to be, we will continue on with those discussions following this afternoon.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Nellie?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I have a question regarding variance number three, which is the building depth 35.22 meter versus the minimum 19 meter. So what is the existing depth of the building? Because I know you are doing addition, or this is just the recommend?
That identifies the total building depth. And so we are at approximately 17 meters. That's not true. I'm sorry, my print is a little bit smaller. But that, so that's the total depth of both the existing and the proposed building. And so the idea was that we did have lot depth. So there was a choice made early on in the design process to take, to try to take advantage of the lot depth as opposed to building up. Being as, you know, an off-major-street-or-avenue property, it seemed much better suited, in our opinion, to keep the building lower but add the FSI and the rental units to the rear of the property. So the building did swell a little bit in length or in depth. However, it did allow us to keep the building much lower and much more subtle from the streetscape, which we thought in this case, you know, being slightly off the major intersection there that...
You're surrounded on two sides by green space, too, it looks like.
Yeah, it's essentially three sides. It does sort of horseshoe around the lot. The subject lot is deeper than the lot to the north, so it's sort of horseshoes, you know, sort of 50% back around on the third side as well. So it's pretty well buffered from, you know, the, I mean, the mature canopy that exists there now, for example, in the rear that surrounds, is much taller than the proposed height of the building. And so, you know, typical concerns around shadowing and sightlines and things like that don't really apply here because of that natural canopy that's already there.
So the height's not an issue there. And I noticed you don't have a, you have a depth variance but not a length, and I presume that's because it's an apartment.
That's right, yeah. And so there's a slight height variance, 1.4.
I noticed that.
Yeah. But again, it was the idea that we kept the building sort of low and made it a little deeper seemed like the right play here.
Anyone else? Nellie?
I understand you were having discussions with the planning, right? And what, did you have discussions about the reduced parking? Because here we have this opposite correlation, you know, up in the number of units, but the parking is down to one for residents. So were there concerns about the planning and how do you address that?
No, planning did not have any concerns, prioritizing the rental units over the parking at this stage. They, there was conversation just about the storage of garbage onsite, and so there was some clarity provided in our revised site plan, which we have in the AIC file. So it identified the areas where the garbage will be stored.
I would note, Nellie, the transportation has written indicating that they're fine with this application.
That's right.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Let's take this into committee. Zaher?
Thank you, Chair. I'll start off with some observations. I think this is an excellent project. I noted also that, of course, the balconies that are proposed all have, I believe, on the south side, if I'm not mistaken, overlooking the forested space. So there's no privacy issues. The height variance, the as of right is, I believe, 11 meters, and this is just about a meter and a half over the ask. Parking, which is always a concern for some, I think the location in this particular case is such that it's very close to both Girard and Coxwell, so within walking space, walking distance and public transit, as I think the agent had indicated. So I do believe this is a very suitable project for this area. And when it comes to parking or the lack of parking, I should say, we've had, we have numerous new high-rises, 30, 40 stories, where parking is reduced. So, you know, I don't really see the issue in the city anymore with regard to parking as long as there's public transit within proximity. So I think this is a very supportable application.
Anyone else? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Just a couple of comments. I agree with my colleagues' comments entirely, and I won't go on further. But I think there are, in this neighborhood, a bunch of other examples of larger buildings that exist with kind of being surrounded by nature but also with smaller buildings. And I think this kind of continues on that trend, and I think it's a positive thing. I did appreciate the fact that the neighbors to the north, it was nice to see a property owner speaking on behalf of the tenants. We don't see that very often, so I think that's a positive thing. And the other speaker spoke about the lane to the west and potential parking on that, and I think that's a great idea and maybe something that you could follow up with your counselor about, because it looks like there's ample room on...
Good points. And I would just add that the introduction of additional rental accommodation in existing neighborhoods is a good thing. And relative to the scale of the variances you're being requested, I think the benefits are quite clear. So can I get a motion from someone? Zaher?
I'll move a motion to approve this application. I believe, I believe the only condition, pardon me, is forestry number two. Outside of that, there are no other conditions.
Okay. Motion to approve by Mr. Byatt with that condition, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would suggest talking to your next-door neighbor. He's got a number of concerns. All right. Next item is 28, 3233 Dundas Street West. This is an application to legalize and maintain the one-story detached garage containing two parking spaces, storage, and a washroom that was constructed without an authorized building permit. The existing detached garage was demolished. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, email correspondence from the agent, tree protection plan, and in order to comply for the subject property, we also have email correspondence from the zoning examiner and from Metro Links.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person. No registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon, Craig.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Greg Ewens, 26 Hayden Park Road, for Batory Planning and Management.
Okay. You have an order to comply, so we'll need a short presentation, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, certainly. So I have submitted a covering letter, which includes all of the information that's necessary. If staff are able to pull that up. So as noted, this results from an order to comply. Put simply, the owner, instead of pulling a permit to renovate and replace the existing garage structure, they got a permit to demolish the garage structure. And since the site is within a CR zone, the setbacks are different than you would typically find for an accessory structure in an R-zone, even though all of the houses along this side of the street are very much, you know, R-zone-type buildings, as are the ones on the rest of the block. And so you can see up here, if staff is able to scroll down to Page Four, you can see, that's the site and surrounding area, low-rise residential uses primarily. That's the zoning. This was the former garage on the site, two bays. If you scroll a little to the next page, you can see the garage that was rebuilt. It was rebuilt on the same footprint as the former garage with the same volume, less an area to the west, which was a smaller sort of side portion of the existing garage. The rear yard's also been landscaped a lot more extensively. There's more trees, more landscaping. And if you scroll to the next page, which is Page Six, you can see the layout of the new garage alongside the layout of the former garage on the left and the footprint of the new garage on the right. So they're very much the rebuilding of the existing structure that was there, and really, it was a phasing of the permits issue that put it into noncompliance, and so we're here to resolve that. We're just requesting two variances for setbacks, which reflect the setbacks of the previous structure and now reflect the rebuilt structure. We have, there are a lot of garage structures in the area with similar situation. You can see on Page Eight of my letter, we've highlighted those. And, yeah, shown in green there. So it's very much consistent with what you see in the fabric of the surrounding area. We, the sign has been posted. The owner has a good relationship with the neighbors as they operate a sales office out of the main building on the site. Nobody has any questions. I think they're actually happy the garage got rebuilt from its previous age, so...
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions? Yes, Nellie?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Just one clarification. Is the variance number one the existing?
The...
Minimum require rear yard setback of 0.65 meter from the south line?
Yes. Yeah, that was the existing setback of the current garage.
And then, as a result, the second variance, it's somehow, if you built on the same footprint as existing situation?
Correct. Both of those variances reflect the previous footprint.
Okay. That's it. Great. Thank you very much. Let's go into committee. Seems like quite a reasonable explanation.
Right. So, in this case, yes. So I can see that, you know, the current garage, it actually, it's a big improvement of the previous condition, and it's actually more like a narrower, which is great. It does use the, you know, the existing condition, so I think it's grandfathered in a way. So I don't see a problem with setbacks in this case, so I would move for the motion to approve, but...
If we could just add that for the record, we don't condone...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. And we don't condone the building without permit, obviously.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Volport to approve this application. I have a second there. Ms. West, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Item number 29, 204 Winnett Avenue, Winnett, pardon me. To construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front-covered porch, a rear basement walkout, a rear ground-floor deck, and a rear second-story balcony. Also to construct a new front yard parking pad and driveway abutting Winnett Avenue, the existing rear shed will be demolished. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised site plan received January the ninth. Redline public notice from the agent received January ninth. Covering letter from the agent received January ninth. An arborist report, and we have staff reports from Urban Forestry and Transportation Services.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Mr. Perez?
Hello again, Chairman and committee members. As pointed out, we're going to have a little bit of issue with...
Eddie, just for the record, I know it's, we know you very well, but just for the record, name and address, please.
Yeah, Eddie Perez at 537 Rogers Road.
Thank you.
Okay. So we got the notice from the forestry, and due to the fact for the tree, we find it's going to be very difficult to get a front yard parking there, so I am removing the front yard parking, so that'll get rid of a few variances. It's going to get rid of variance number one.
Okay.
Variance number six, and variance number seven. I had crossed out number three, but I made an error on that. It's supposed to be number seven instead of number three. So one, six, and seven get omitted from the, so we don't need variance for that because we're removing the front yard parking.
Okay. And that deals with forestry's concern as well?
Yes, it does. Because then there won't be any excavation in that area. It will be within the designated area that they require, but we'll also go through them anyways to get their approval.
Okay.
It should be more easier to get it now without the front yard parking.
All right. Okay. Panel, any questions? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Just to clarify, thanks for those changes to the variances, but I guess we'll have to adjust the purpose as well. So just remove the reference to, also to construct a front yard parking pad and driveway, like that sentence? And leave, just so take away the second sentence and leave the third. That's right with you?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Take this into committee. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to see that the applicant has removed the driveway. That was my only concern with it. I think the rest of the proposal is actually very restrained and fits in well with its neighbors. And the variances are extremely minor, in my opinion. So I'll move approval of the application as amended. That's with a revised purpose and the deletion of variances one, six, and seven, and also subject to the Urban Forestry Condition one.
And changes to the purpose, did you say that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mr. Reed for approving this amended application. I have a second there. Nellie, Ms. Volport, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is number 30, 110 Dixon Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing one-story ancillary building, which is a detached garage in the rear yard, by constructing a one-story addition along the north wall and a complete second-story cantilevered addition. This ancillary building will be converted into a garden suite with one residential dwelling in it. Committee has before to copy the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised zoning notice received January seventh. Two photographs of trees on the property. Four photographs of the subject property itself. Covering letter from the agent and decision number A0436/24TUI affecting the subject property.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person. No registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chair, name and address, please, ma'am.
Jaclyn Lee, and I'm with Batory Planning and Management, representing the owner for 110 Dixon Avenue.
Okay. Now, this was previously refused at committee, so...
That's right, at the July third committee. And I have a presentation if you'd like.
Great. We'll need that.
Okay.
Is this it?
No, that's our application letter.
Is this in the supplementary? We don't seem to have, do we have? I don't think, don't see it listed. We don't see your presentation listed.
It's in supplementary.
Is it in supplementary?
Yeah, it's the last item.
It was, it's dated January ninth, and it's a C.A. presentation.
Oh, it is. It's, sorry, it's listed as item 31. It's actually item 30. That's why we're confused.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, great. So, good afternoon, members of the committee and Mr. Chair. I'm here to represent the owner of 110 Dixon Avenue, where the... I'm here to represent the owner of 110 Dixon Avenue, where the committee had refused a previous garden suite application as a result of neighbor opposition on July 3, 2024. Since then, we've been working with the neighbors to the north and west, both of whom are immediately impacted by the proposed development, to discuss the existing conditions, the extent of the proposed development, and to proactively work on resolutions. Next slide, please. Oh, this slide, yeah. The subject site is a corner site that is generally rectangular in shape and fronts onto Dixon Avenue at the front and Woodbine Avenue along the flanking side. The site is zoned and designated for residential development and is located on a major street which is intended to accommodate neighborhood scale intensification. The permitted types and densities of housing in neighborhoods has been increased in recent years through various EHA initiatives. In addition to this, the provincial regulations have, as recently as fall 2024, have been implemented to accelerate the provision of additional dwelling units, specifically ADUs like garden suites, in support of the More Homes Built Faster Act. Next slide, please. The area is well supported by transit and active transportation infrastructure, including bike lanes and transit service. The site itself is a couple minutes' walk to TTC stops along Woodbine Avenue and Queen Street East. It's also a 10-minute walk to amenities that support the residential use, including daycare facilities, public and private schools, a library, the Queen Street Commercial Corridor, and Woodbine Beach Park. Next slide, please. The application before the committee today is for three variances for, in addition to an existing detached garage, to permit a garden suite. As a result of the implementation of OREG 29919, the variances relating to angular planes have been removed, as provided in the most updated zoning review dated January 6, 2025, and so the variances have been reduced from six to three. And two of those variances are driven by the garden suite utilizing the existing gardens, garage structure, which triggers setback variances from the rear and side yard. Highlighted on the site plan are the additions in blue and the existing structure in red. The light blue addition is for the second story only. And the city's garden suite policy specifically encourages using existing structures as garden suites, and recognizes that variances may be necessary in these cases, and this is one such case. Retaining the existing structure and adaptively reusing it for a new dwelling is a more sustainable choice than building new, as there's limited construction waste and also reduces construction time. Next slide, please. These are the floor plan layouts, and as you can see, it efficiently uses the compact space. Next slide, please. The landscaping reflects the existing rear yard condition, which has existed for more than 17 years, where the flanking yard has been paved to provide on-street parking. The proposed development maintains the existing parking spaces while increasing the amount of soft landscaping from 12% to 15%, which is a net increase of 5% from the initial application and 3% from existing conditions, which support the intent of planning policy to provide site drainage and urban ecology. In addition, where hard surfacing needs to be replaced as a result of construction, permeable pavers will be considered to further improve the site storm water management. Next slide, please. The proposed development has been designed to address privacy issues and to provide adequate space for soft landscaping, maintenance, and repairs in drainage. We've read from previous letters of concern that neighbors had been in, and we've also been in conversation with neighbors since the initial application, to discuss the existing site conditions and their relation to the adjacent properties, and details of the revised development proposal, as well as resolutions to their concerns. Our neighbors to the north have expressed that they would like to maintain a collaborative relationship and welcome the opportunity to provide input on specific design and material choices. The neighbors to the west have also provided confirmation that they're not opposed to the revised proposal, subject to the south window on the second story being provided as frosted glass for improved privacy, and the replacement of the west lot line fence with a taller fence, both of which the owners amendable to providing at its cost. Next slide, please. Since the initial hearing on Janu-, July 3, the proposal has been updated to increase soft landscaping and separation distance from the main dwelling, and to provide for two bicycle parking spaces. There have also been changes at the provincial level to facilitate the development of additional dwelling units, such as garden suites, and the owner has been in discussion with the neighbors to resolve their concerns. Next slide, please. In conclusion, the revised garden suite plan has been designed in accordance with the city's policies to limit impacts to the greatest degree possible on adjacent properties, and we've worked with the neighbors in providing additional project details and made revisions to the plan and to resolve potential impact concerns. It's our opinion that the minor variances satisfy the four tests of the Planning Act and represent good planning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and great that you were able to go back and resolve those concerns, that's good. Just to confirm from the public notice, so you are removing variances four, five, and six from the public notice?
Those are the three angular plane notice.
Yeah, those are all the angular plane ones. Okay, so you're removing those. Okay, thanks. Panel, any questions? Just on the landscaping, it's a little bit better, but it's pretty hard, and I appreciate that there was a garage there previously, so it's kind of the same, but had your client possibly considered a green roof or anything like that? You have a flat roof, right?
Yes, we do have a flat roof. I'm not sure if they've considered a green roof. Would you consider?
Oh, they're there, are they?
Yeah, he's over there. Just ask. Would you be open to considering that?
We could have one second.
Oh, sure.
Are there any other requests that we could-
I, I don't see any.
Okay. One second. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so he is open to considering the green roof option-
Great.
-in addition to the enhanced landscaping that-
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have raised that if, if it wasn't, you know, you're pretty light on the landscaping, in part because of the parking space that has been there for 17 years.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, anything we can do to contribute to the greening of the site, I think that's a good thing. So thank you very much for that consideration. Nellie?
Question, I just, you mentioned permeable pavers, but I don't see it anywhere on the plan.
The permeable pavers are being considered where, if we do need to remove any of the existing, like, concrete where the parking area is, then it's something that they would consider for the replacement of that space or the material. But it, well, right now, we're planning to use the existing garage as it is, and then the addition is mostly on the second floor, and then where it is on the first and second floor, it's being surrounded by, like, the landscaping that you see there.
Okay.
The stairway.
Talking about the existing parking, you know, it's, it's paint, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's concrete, I understand, right? Okay.
Okay, anything else? Nazilla?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So then, just to summarize, the modification you did from previous application, which was you, you just improved 5% landscaping and soft landscaping, and then removed the angular pane, which we all, it's actually by law is now removed. So, but you haven't modified variance number two and three, it's exactly like what you had before us in January, in July.
Right, the variance, the setback variances reflect the existing setbacks, so we're not planning to, like, we need it to be the size that it is, since we don't want to impact more of the parking areas. I know, like, parking was a concern that was raised at the last meeting, too, and it's part of why we added the two. I mean, also, it being required by added two bicycle parking spaces. We also increased the separation distance between the two buildings, because before, we didn't meet the five-meter separation distance requirement. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go into committee. Anyone wanna, Nellie, did you want to take a crack at this? Or did you have a view, a comment?
Comment, and I'm still in-
You gotta speak into your microphone, we can't hear you.
Okay. Sorry?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, again, I'm still in the here's thunder here, but, you know, but permeable pavers, but I think it would be just a good idea to put it as a condition, I think. There is this concrete pad, the existing parking on the lot, so I'm just, you're-
My only observation would be, I think we've, they've been very kind and considered adding a green roof. The cost of pulling that concrete and replacing it is probably fairly substantial, so I, I, they seem to be open to, if they have to cut the concrete to do the construction, they'll replace wherever they cut with permeable. Maybe that's enough rather than replacing the whole driveway? That'd be my view anyways.
I, I would agree. I think, I think the net benefit of a green roof is probably better, and like, the, the carbon of replacing concrete with then new concrete pavers, even if they're permeable, I don't think is necessarily great. So I, I'd be happy just with the green roof as a condition.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, someone want to take a crack at a motion?
Unless you disagree, then I can do.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to-
Yeah, no, good.
I think we-
You're just gonna arm wrestle here?
Nellie's got it.
Nellie's got it, okay.
Okay. I would like to bring forward a motion to approve this application, this improved application, and as we've discussed, put as a condition a green roof over the garage, garden suite, and I don't see any other conditions, and, as amended, yes, as amended, yeah. And, you know, and the only condition of a green roof.
Okay, motion to approve the amended application with a condition for a green roof by Ms. Volport, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? Opposed? Nazilla, Ms. West opposes, but the motion carries, you have your approval. Thank you. All right. Item number 31, Five Leonard Circle. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a side second-story addition over the existing garage and a rear one-story addition at the southeast portion of the dwelling. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, and presentation materials again from Mr. Perez.
Hello again, Chairman and committee members, I'm Eddie Perez at 537 Rogers Road. I have before you, it's two variances, one is 0.35 allowable, we have 0.37, we're very minimal over, and the side yard setback is an existing situation, and it's only in the one corner, because the lot's a pie shape. So if you put up the floor pan, you can see it's only in the one corner where we're mostly the minimal one, at 0.14. But as you get farther back, it's more than four feet, and it's an existing situation. So I feel that the variances are minor in nature and meet the four tests. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, straightforward. Okay, let's take this into committee. Who wants this one? Nazilla?
Through you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, it's very straightforward, and I'm convinced that it's very minor, therefore I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition.
Okay, motion to approve by Ms. West, seconded by Mr. Bayet, all in favor? You have your approval. And our next item, 32, 1444 Dufferin Street. This is an application to construct a new two-story ancillary building with a second-story balcony and the rear yard abutting the laneway. The ancillary building will contain one laneway suite. There'll be a total of two residential dwelling units on the slot, one in the main building and one in the laneway suite. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property. And I think we have Mr. Perez back again.
Hello again, Eddie Perez from 537 Rogers Road. And on this one, we only have the one variance, which is the width, and that's an existing condition, we're just adding on top, and it's pretty straightforward, as you can see. Thank you very much.
It is. Thank you. Panel, any questions? Nope. Let's take this into committee. Peter?
Busy day for Mr. Perez. This is a, this is a really good application. I think that asking for this variance makes it, makes it actually a better project. It's more, more efficient and, and just makes sense, and doesn't leave any spaces on the side. So I move approval without condition.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Reed. Do I have a second there? Ms. Volport, all in favor? You have your approval, Eddie. Three for three today.
I think maybe four.
Four for four. Even better. All right, item 33, 28 Gray Street. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition with a new patio and stairs and a complete third-story addition. There will be a, there will be a, the front and rear terraces on the third level. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, revise site plan, floor plans, and elevations, received December 19th, six photographs of the subject property, and a cover letter from the agent.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon, Ms. Spiro.
Hi, it's Mr. Meza and Mrs. Spiro here.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair and committee members, thanks so much for hearing us.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, so we're looking to get one variance. It's FSI variance, currently 0.6. We're asking for 1.3. Reasons for the, the application is, you know, the house is for ourselves. We're, we're planning growing family, we're just need a little bit more space from where we are now. We do feel like the proposed plan does fit into the neighborhood. Our, our plan is to use some of the demolition material and reuse it, such as the brick facade, and, you know, that's gonna help kind of integrate into the existing space. Yeah, that's, I guess that's pretty much it. I think it's pretty straightforward, and yeah, if the committee has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Sir, sir, you said you only have one variance for FSI. There's a variance in front of us for height as well.
There should have been an updated notice with the height removed, because it doesn't exceed 11 meters, which is the maximum height. So that was a, that was a mistake in our first application, and we realized that we didn't need to have that variance.
Okay, I don't see a revised notice in our materials. So, notwithstanding, so you're removing variance one?
Yes, sir, I don't know if that was one or two. I don't have in mind, but-
Well, in front of us, the way the public notice is written, variance number one is seeking relief from the height variance. So if you're removing that, we will remove variance number one, and you will just have one variance for FSI.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So is the FSI number correct? If you, if you've made your building differently, is that the correct FSI?
Yes, sir.
Did he say yes?
It is, yes.
Oh, sorry. All right, great, thank you.
I think you're just going to go to the floor.
He's, he, they don't need a height variance anymore, so he's removing that.
Are you, so, so, sorry, what are you saying? Do you want to ask him? Just, just to clarify, because you're mentioning the building height, what's the building height you're going, you know, are you planning to build? Is it 10?
It's, yeah, it's 10.44 meters.
Oh.
10.44, so you're still above the maximum?
The maximum is 11 meters for that area.
So was it a mistake on the zoning part?
It was a mistake on our application. We were under the impression that it was a 10-meter. Our architect made a, made an error when calculating, or when looking into it.
So through you, Mr. Chair, this was done on a waiver form. So the applicant is taking the responsibility. If there is an error, they'll have to come back to committee with a new application.
Right. Did you hear that?
I did.
Yeah, so because you didn't get the zoning examiner to come and look at it, you did a waiver, so you're responsible for ensuring that all the variances you need, you've got.
Well, yeah, we did submit the updated application. I, I don't know why the committee doesn't have it. As for the zoning, we, we did have the first round of zoning go through. It, it did take quite a bit of time. At that time, the zoning examiner considered the house as a new construction, but we're not taking down, we revised the plan, so we're maintaining over 50% of the existing walls, you know, to consider it a lawful existing building. So the FSI one, after our research, was the only one that we need a variance for, and that's why we signed, or we did the waiver, just because we, we do need to get this, this project kind of moving forward. Just on a personal note, we, we are in the process of adoption through the Catholic Children's Day Society, and we are just kind of- Day Society, and we are just kind of hoping to, to get things moving a little bit quicker. And from the first zoning examiner's timeline, it was about two months for them to examine it. So we, we need to move forward with that.
Okay, well, again, it's, it's your call how you want to deal with it. So...
Yes, I think, yeah, we, we need to move forward with it, yeah.
Okay, so you'd like to remove that variance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so, panel, we just have one variance before us, FSI. Let's go into committee. Zahir?
Thank you, Chair. I'll take this easy one. I, I, I think the, we've only got one variance in front of us, and I think this is a very straightforward application. And I also just wanted to comment that the rendition that was presented makes for a very, very interesting facade for the face, the renovations. I don't believe there are any, any conditions attached to this, so I would like to move a motion to approve this motion as amended.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bayet to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have your approval, sir, thank you. We come to the last item of today's agenda. One ninety-eight Howland Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a one-story addition along the rear south side wall, also to construct a new rear ground floor deck with canopy and stairs. The existing rear porch will be demolished. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, previous decision affecting the subject property, an arborist report, and we have a report from urban forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's actually still afternoon, pardon me. All right. Name and address, please.
My name is Gloria Posteloo. I'm the architect and agent for one ninety-eight Howland Avenue.
Okay, this is pretty minor. Does anyone need a presentation?
Just a question.
Okay, well, just, ma'am, we don't need a presentation, we'll just go to questions, if that's okay?
Of course.
All right, Zahir?
Thank you, Chair. You've got a rooftop deck, I believe it's at the third floor level at the rear.
Correct.
I'm sure you'll have overlook on adjacent properties. I wonder if that, the, I believe it's the north and south sides could be one point five meters to provide privacy, privacy screening?
This is an existing deck.
Oh, it's an existing...
It's an existing deck.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at it. But if you'd like to change it, by all means.
I think, I think it could use some work, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Not seen.
Okay, we have no further questions. Let's take it into committee. Does someone want to take this one?
Sure, if I could remind, I'll, I'll continue with that. As I said, I think this is a very straightforward application, one variance. So I'd like to, sorry, two variances, but I'd like to move a motion to approve. Forestry condition number two would apply.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bayet to approve, seconded by Ms. Volport, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you. Thank you all. We are adjourned at four thirty-five. Thank you all. Great job, guys. Way to go.
Please turn off your videos. Microphone.